Order. Breeze it, it goes.
(music) Oh say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order, fellas. Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march. Forward, march.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you again for our deliberate life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. We thank you for this gathering this morning to the young people that's here to witness the city government and to grow and to learn. We thank you for the government officials here that we so dearly depend on, that we arose this morning and the lights was on, the water was running, uh, streets were clear, everyone was safe, and that's all because of the officials of Carersville, Georgia, a city that we love. Come down, be in the midst of this meeting, that we do the work of this city, that all will be pleased. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Ms. Olmer, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward one. Jay Stebb, Ward two.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward five.
Here.
Pat Friend, Ward six.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. The first order of the business today is to swear in our Youth Day, Civic Youth Day officials. Uh, Ms. Olmer, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Those who've been designated as an official, would please come forward in this morning?
That would be any city council member or school board member.
And mayor.
And mayor, yeah, that too, thank you.
I count.
If you would, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city of Carersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office, so help you die? All right, congratulations for this morning, thank you.
Thank you very much. While they're making their way back, I want to call on Carersville School Superintendent Mark Fierbach to step forward and make a few comments about this day and, uh, and anything else you want to talk about while you're up here. I'll also ask you to turn that microphone around and congratulate you on your Carersville Boys Quartet and the new ROTC program at the high school.
Thank you, we are proud of them and, uh, these, this day each year we get to showcase, uh, student groups, uh, one being our quartet who always sings, but this year having our ROTC present the colors was amazing, it's our first year with that program. I think the goal is in, by year three, to have about a hundred and fifty students in that program, and in year one, we have about a hundred. Um, so it's, it's been a great start to the school year. I just want to say thank you, uh, for the, for the morning and for the day. Uh, Civic Youth Day, I, I know takes a lot of effort on everyone's part, this is the sixty-fourth Civic Youth Day. Uh, we're one of three communities that still participates and, and does it. And it just gives our kids a, a taste and a look at, at local government, where decisions are made, uh, how things are done, and so I just want to say thank you for your time. Thank you to the kids, uh, for their participation. Uh, thank you to Randall Trammell, Ms. Boye, uh, for all her hard work as well, so I appreciate your time this morning, thank you.
Very good, thank you, and I'm guessing at this time, uh, Mark, you can either nod or shake your head as, if I'm right or wrong, is this time, if you're not part of the city portion, are y'all staying for the meeting, are y'all going on to other things? You're leaving, okay, so the, uh, the people that are, uh, that are school board members and uh, I guess just school board members and superintendent and principal, uh, y'all are y'all are, y'all are leaving us. Enjoy your day, we'll see you at the public safety headquarters for lunch today. Don't show up at the civic center. Might get dragged into a quilting class or something. All right, uh, actually, we're moving things around a little bit this morning, we do have recognition of, uh, some awards from the Georgia Downtown Association, so I will call forward, Ms. Lily Reed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, so I am pleased to make y'all aware of, um, two pieces of recognition statewide that downtown Carersville was given at our recent professional association meeting, um, Ron Goss with his redevelopment of the first national bank building has given a statewide award for best facade renovation. And then the Downtown Development Authority and basically ten of our local city and county partners, community organizations, were, um, collectively given recognition as premier partners for our collaboration on the African-American Heritage Trail, which includes uh, nine sites in the downtown and nine sites throughout the rest of the county, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we're gonna give that to Mr. Goss, is he here?
He has his, he has his picture and I think we were told we were gonna do a little photograph of that, so.
You want me in it, or no?
Yeah.
It sounded like I was inviting myself.
And all of our partner groups, um, we've got people from Noble Hill, Summer Hill, we've got the Edward Bush School, Key Part of Beautiful, the Harley History Museum, we've got the Daresville DEA, Bartow History Museum, Laura J., all of y'all come up here and get your recognition. This took over a year to produce, and Pam Wilson, primary researcher over here, and Cal, do you want to come out?
I can.
Y'all down here, Cal? I'll bring the cameras up.
All right, Council, now it's time to approve the meeting minutes from our September fifth meeting, and you've had these well in advance today and had an opportunity to review them. Now would be the opportunity to make any edits to those, uh, which would make Meredith feel good because she wasn't the one who's taking the minutes. Uh, if not, then the motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Uh, Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started off with, uh, SU nineteen dash zero four special use permit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, first, this case has been properly posted and advertised, as you noted, this is a special use permit. The reason for the special use permit, uh, the property at the intersection of Highway twenty and four eleven is currently zoned general commercial. In the general commercial zoning category, uh, you can do multifamily above and behind, if you go through the special use permit process. Uh, this particular tract's approx- approximately thirty-six acres, they're looking to do, um, the multifamily above, uh, general retail on about a fifteen and a half acre, uh, track on the overall mixed-use development. With that, uh, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and they did recommend approval four oh for the approval of this application.
Okay. Uh, how many units in total on that, Randy?
Two hundred and ten.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, all right, thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, Randy, I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU nineteen dash zero four and ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to do so at this time. And if you would, when you step forward, this is the case, uh, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name's Barry Henderson and JB Henderson Properties, and we're the developer of this project, and, um, I, I think you all have all the information hopefully about the project, uh, we're very excited about it, if you could flip back to that site plan, I'd appreciate it. Go to the other one if you could. Uh, those four buildings is what we're talking about with the special use permit, and what we're doing is creating a, a town center, new urbanism, um, and this whole project out here, I'll be brief, is really a town center, so to speak, for we've got the automobile museum across the street, which will generate not only the automobile, but a really, uh, a nice presence to the area with a park, so if you can sort of picture the tellus with the grounds around the tellus, that's what you're talking about here. And then, uh, behind us, we join the hospital, uh, to the east, uh, we join the college, uh, and, and then we've got the community center, so the whole area out there is very bright, vibrant, and we feel like that we're in the center of it, and we would like to provide housing, but we'd like to provide housing in such a way that it's a community center, uh, it's, uh, where people can live and work and play, so to speak. Uh, we feel that the demand not feel, we've done a lot of research and marketing as to what we, what the marketing is, is, is calling for, so this plan is, is, is produced based on market studies. So it's, it's, it's a real plan, it, sure it'll vary as we go along to some extent, but those apartments won't. That Main Street corridor, when you come in off of twenty, uh, is a roundabout, there's be a hotel, uh, planned for there, and then you'll run down a Main Street, and with those buildings being, uh, four stories, uh, with re- some retail on the bottom, we're not doing a whole lot of retail, we've got like nineteen thousand feet of it. You gotta be careful in Carersville when you start over retailing things, so uh, when you go down the Main Street, four stories on either side, you're creating a very nice, um, uh, approach, if you go to, to, um, the picture of what the idea go about, not those. If you look at that bottom one, primarily, that's what you call mercantile style, and we're probably gonna lean toward that mercantile style because of the small-town area, but then if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that Main Street effect where you see four-story buildings in there. So I think we're gonna create something that's, uh, it's unique, it's different for the, uh, the county, and I think it's something everybody would be very proud of.
Mr. Henderson, uh, Mr. Menino just said that there was two hundred and ten units, do you have a breakdown of uh, the number of, like, how many single fam- how many single bedroom, two-bedroom?
Right, there was a, there was a plan submitted to county, and I was hoping that you all had all that available to you, it's a complete breakdown of this whole project as to how many townhouses, how many apartments, how much retail, uh, the breakdown of the units and the apartments that we foresee right now, uh, relative to three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom. We're even gonna be providing a few units for the college, or at least for college students, where you would have a center, uh, community room, if you all can picture any of the college, uh, dormitories or some of that stuff is designed now, where the students have their own individual rooms, but they have a common area within that. So, uh, you know, once we get into, to the, the actual design of this with the architect, uh, but, but you should be seeing approximately what we put in the form. And I was hoping that would be distributed to all of you, so you'd have a chance to look at it before we came to this. Pardon?
We have.
Okay.
Are you, are you still short parking spaces?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
Are you short parking spaces?
Yeah, there's a, uh, when we did the conceptual plan, if you go back to that conceptual plan, I think we're probably short eighteen, but that's a conceptual plan, when we go to permitting, the whole, the whole, I mean, we get really into the nitty-gritty of this thing, and so nobody's gonna off, uh, authorize permitting to us unless we meet that, but we've got enough property here that we can fit in those eighteen parking spaces without any problem.
The, uh, general price point for rent, I know it's probably a little bit early for that, but have you got a range?
It's a little early for that, um, I, I, I can't tell you that, I, I don't, it might be in-
And are you gonna manage the property after it's-
No, no, this is gonna be developed, uh, in conjunction with a gentleman in Atlanta named Joe Mackey, who's done a lot of these projects. And Joe will be the primary developer of this, um, and it will be managed by a third party who is experienced in managing this type of development, no, we would not, this project's way out of, of, uh, certainly, I, we don't manage properties, and, and so it's certainly out of the range of any local people to manage this property, so we would bring in a, a third party, very experienced, uh, manager, because there's a lot of, uh, equity and investments put into this property that we've gotta take care of.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Again, public hearing for SU nineteen dash zero four, anybody wishing to spit, step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU nineteen dash zero four. This is a first reading, we'll take this up for, uh, consideration at our next council meeting. Uh, Randy, if you'll please move us on to SU nineteen dash zero six.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council, uh, this is a special use permit application also. Uh, currently, uh, the applicant, Auto Cash Carersville LLC has a total pond located at Two Dixie Avenue, they're gonna be relocating to Tennessee Street, corner of Tennessee and Nelson Street, in a multi-tenant building. Uh, with that, uh, the multiple use zoning category does require a special use permit for the location, to locate a total pond shop in that area. So with that, it went through a Planning Commission public hearing, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for SU nineteen dash zero six, ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Leslie Simmons, eleven oh five North Tennessee Street, Carersville, for the applicant. The application was recommended with the condition that there be no outside storage, and, and that's no problem for the applicant. I would like to remind the council that this property was previously used as a palm, title pond business pa- in the past years. It fell out of that use, hence the need for the application today, but it was previously approved for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to step forward and speak for or against on this item? And I will close the public hearing for SU nineteen dash zero six, and again, Council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our next council meeting. Uh, we'll now move on to Z nineteen dash zero two.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Like the previous cases, this has been properly posted and advertised. This particular location is on Center Road, it'll be adjacent to I seventy-five, approximately a hundred and eleven acres, they're proposing to rezone it from R twenty to multifamily for a multifamily development of approximately three hundred units. Before I go any further, first, I'm gonna, we did receive a, a letter from the applicant requesting that this application be tabled by, by the council until December fifth, which time they will work out some other issues and may even put together another plan. With that said, we had a lengthy public hearing with the Planning Commission. Uh, a lot of information was discussed, and the Planning Commission did recommend denial of this application.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you, sir. Um, and yes, we, uh, Council, as Mr. Menino stated, we, we had notification this morning that the applicant, uh, did wish to table that, this item. I do know that there are a number of people from the community that are here to, uh, speak on this, and I think Council has all felt it prudent to go ahead and have the public hearing uh, before they make a decision on tabling that, to give those who are here an opportunity to speak. Uh, should this item be tabled, uh, just know that it will still come before Council for two readings, uh, and if, as we, if Council goes as requested, those would take place on December fifth, and then December nineteenth would be those two meetings, so uh, there'll be opportunities to speak then, if you wish to speak this morning, I know there's people that took time away from work or from other, uh, responsibilities to be here, and we would like to give those people that are here to speak this morning the opportunity to do so. So at this time, uh, I will open up a public hearing for, uh, Z nineteen dash zero two and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time.
I'm gonna cut, 'cause I got a superintendent child waiting for my ring. Uh, back in the central office, um.
Your name and address, sir?
My name's Mark Fierbach, forty-five Galway Drive, um, if you were here at the public, or the Planning Commission meeting, I apologize for hearing me read this statement again. I'm just gonna read my statements, um, that I read that, that evening, and I want to do so this morning before I get back to work. My name's Mark Fierbach and I'm the Superintendent of Carersville City Schools. The concerns I share this morning are in some ways similar to what I've shared at various times throughout the year. My concern continues to be the unknown and the un- unintended consequences that come with the unknown, not only for our school system, but the city as well. Do we have a plan for ten years down the road when some of these projects have come to fruition? This project that i- is being tabled at this time, i- it sounds very nice, uh, and, and the gentlemen that I've worked with, you know, that represent this company are very nice as well, they've been very forthcoming with how it could possibly impact our school system as well. With that being said, my understanding is we've seen projects approved over the past one to two years that include a total of five hundred and seventy-one apartments and/or townhomes. A hundred and forty-four apartments from a previous project were recently completed, and this, this project includes three hundred units. The overall number is now pushing seven hundred units that have already been built or recent, or already been built or have been approved. Is there a guarantee that the rollout of all these units will be in such a way that steady growth will occur? Is there a guarantee that the developers, that the developers plan to keep these properties for a long time? Our schools are at or near capacity and we continue to see a steady increase each, each year. Nothing major, but when you add up the years, it could catch up with us. Too many projects coming to fruition in a short amount of time could have a negative impact on our school district's facilities, transportation, and student services. We're excited about the growth of our community, but respectfully ask that the impact of our school system be considered if too many requests are granted in a short amount of time. Because we're the ones who will be dealing with the con- the outcomes, both positive and negative, years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for?
I have one question.
Sure.
For Mr. Fierbach. Um, is this comment basically for all new apartments coming into the city?
Yeah, i- i- it is.
So it would've, it would've related to the previous one we had as well?
It would've been, I said something to Barry, I have not been able to talk with Barry, and I was supposed to call him last week and we couldn't connect, so yes, sir.
I just want to make sure there was something different between the two projects that one, the school didn't want to have a comment on and one they did.
No, and I-
It's all, all apartments.
And if I can say this here, I'll, I'll say it, I said at the Planning Commission meeting, you know, where before, my understanding was with his, was a lot of one and twos above businesses, uh, where, you know, it was maybe gonna be attracting, uh, you know, how is it gonna impact us, attracting, I think they said at the last meeting, Carersville Medical Center employees, Georgia Highlands, things to that nature. Um, and I said that statement at the Planning Commission meeting because when they started talking about three bedrooms, I'm like, okay, is this a different kind of thing, so I, I will be contacting him, I said it this morning, we'll be talking, so yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to clarify that for the Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time?
Mayor, Council members, good morning. My name is Howard Heinsley and I live at seventeen Hartworth Lane in Carersville. I'm here to voice my objection to this project and my support for the unanimous decision that was made by the Carersville Planning Commission. The Carersville school system is an outstanding school system with a diverse student population. One of the positive characteristics of the system is that they, along with the community, celebrate and appreciate the student diversity that we enjoy. My objections center on both the short and primarily the long-term effects that this project will have on the Carersville City Schools. Now, let's review some facts. In two thousand and five, the homeowner-occupied housing in Carersville was sixty percent. In Georgia, it was sixty-three percent. And in the United States, it was sixty-four percent. In my opinion, that's a healthy ratio, which should be a standard used when reviewing single-family and multifamily projects. Today, the US percentage of homeowner-occupied housing is sixty-three point eight percent. Georgia is sixty-three percent. And Carersville is fifty point seven percent, which is a nine point one percent decrease since two thousand and five. What has that meant for the school system? Here are a couple of examples. A nine point five percent increase in students on free and reduced lunch, and a six percent increase of students speaking English as a second language. The common denominator in school systems across the country who have student populations with high percentage of economically disadvantaged students is the disproportionate ratio of home-occupied housing to rental property. Now, I understand this is a difficult decision, but I ask you to take a long-term view of what the impact of approval of this project will have on the school system. The socioeconomic trend is going in the direction which will have challenging and expensive effects on the school system. Now, I remind you that again, what I've said, that the ru- the common denominator in the data I provided you is reduction in single-family homes and an increase in rental property. At the request of the Chairman of the, uh, of the Planning Commission, he asked me to pin how that might work as a standard, which I have done, I'm gonna pro- I'll provide you with a copy of what I sent him. It has been used in places I've worked before. I don't subscribe that it should be an ordinance. I don't subscribe that it should be something that's, you do every single time and apply it each time. But what I do suggest to the Planning Commission and you as well, is that you look at it as a standard and look at each individual project and take a long-term view of what impact it would have on all of, of the different aspects of our community. And I'll give this to, uh, the City Mayor.
I attribute it to Meredith, our clerk, she can make copies for everybody.
Thank you.
I sent that to Mr. Penison, his request. I would remind you, you are a city school system. I've got the data to show you what those percentages are in other communities, if you're interested, that have city school systems. It's much easier for a school system and a county system or a larger system to adjust to those kinds of projects because you can rezone schools and transfer students to make that socio- socioeconomic balance. I did that in the system where I was prior to coming to Carersville. That's something you can't do in Carersville. You will have an impact on each of our schools, we got basically one elementary. There're two facilities, but you got one elementary, one middle, and one high school. So, in my judgment, this is gonna have a serious impact, if not immediately, down the road. So I appreciate and respect the Planning Commission, uh, abil- uh, listening to us and considering the information that I and others presented to them, and I thank you today, and I hope that you will, uh, as you consider this project, take the same, make the same decision that Planning Commission made. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Heinsley, I'm not-
Mayor, just the same question that I asked, uh, the superintendent. Uh, is this comment directed towards all apartments in the city, or just this particular project?
Yeah, yeah, I think you asked me that at the Planning Committee.
I think I did.
Yeah. I only knew about this project from reading about it, I'm here representing myself, I, uh, I don't, I don't know, I know at least one school board member knows I'm here, uh, one of my former bosses, and apparently Ms. Benton read about it in the paper, and she's here, but that's, uh, I'm not here representing anyone. I was not aware of the other project. Uh, and my interpretation, at the time the presentation was made at the Planning Commission was, this is gonna be in a commercial area, I don't believe many people with children are gonna be, don't wanna be housed, having their homes where it's just commercial. But, Dr. Fierbach, and when I shared my comments to him, uh, in- But Dr. Fierbach, when I shared my comments to him, indicated to me was assured that this was kind of a moving target, and that the plans had changed and it wasn't as concrete. What I'm suggesting to you and to the planning commission is to take a look at what I provided you. This data that I've gave you is readily available. It's suggesting that you be provided this on a regular basis, so that you know how many permits of multifamily you've awarded, how many single-family each time you look at these projects, and that you measure it against that, and then make a judgment on that project. Not, not to make that fast. So, I don't really have an opinion on the other project. It'd be unfair of me to, to actually, because I didn't review it. I reviewed this one in some detail. And so I, I don't think it'd be right for me to take a position on that without going into more detail than looking at it.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I apologize for my voice. I have a partially paralyzed vocal cord, and it's not from screaming at certain people. It's just happened, and we don't know why. So, I hope you can understand me. I will try to talk clearly, but let me know if you didn't understand what I say. My name is Linda Benton. I live at 144 Cherokee Circle in Carisville, and I am a citizen. I'm here because I love Carisville. I love this city. I know you know somewhat my history, but for those of you who don't, I was on the school board for 23 years, president for 17, and I was in high school when we had the first Civic Youth Day. It was very interesting to come back and hear the good things that are traditionally important in Carisville. One thing, I'm here to support fully Dr. Heinsley's remarks, and I will tell you, hiring him was the second best vote I ever made on the school board. The first was keeping Carisville High School downtown. And I think we all know how that's turned out, and the community has united behind the high school and the whole school system. We are blessed in this community for the school board and the city council to get along so well. When I went to meetings, they said, "You have a good rapport with the city council." And we said, "Yes, we do. They watch our backs, we watch theirs," and the county school board and the county commissioner. We are blessed in this community to care about each other and to all get along. So with that, I want to tell you, I support fully what Dr. Heinsley has said. We have done this for years and years. Watch the growth, not immediate growth, long-time growth. That's why this community is so attractive to so many people. So, that is the way I feel about it as a citizen.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Good morning.
My name's Arthur Smith. I live at 25 Autumn Canyon Path Southeast, Autumn Canyon Subdivision, right off of Center Road. And we had a very interesting council meeting, well, not council, review meeting recently, as you, most of you were there. But I just wanted to bring up some research that some of our team has put together. Excuse me. Out of six apartment complexes of the many complexes in Carisville, as of 9/11, there were 171 one-bedroom apartments, 111 two-bedroom apartments, 11 three-bedroom apartments, and three four-bedroom apartments available to rent. I think that falls under the category of supply and demand. Seems like we have a lot of supply. The first thing that I noticed on this project is that they advertised that they have 111 acres to build 300 units on. But yet, they made the comment that only 50 acres is going to house the 300 units. 61 acres is going to be titled green space, apparently, until they get approval. But, the other thing is, is the water pressure. Now, I know with my house, I can't run two water hoses at the same time in my yard without cutting the water pressure in half. I can't have more than one sprinkler on each water hose, or they just quit running. So, and we're not up at 1,050 feet elevation. They say that they can't go up 1,100 feet elevation because they don't have enough water pressure. Well, that's only 50 feet above 1,050. So it seems to me like those people living at 1,050 feet elevation is going to have a rough time taking a shower. And the people down in my area may not even get one if all of them up there is running water at the same time, because it's got to come by our house. So, I, I just don't think the infrastructure is good enough for this number of units on Center Road. The, the other question is, nobody has mentioned the water pressure to run fire sprinkler systems in 300 units of apartments. I mean, if they're very close to not having enough water pressure for people to have a shower at 1,050 feet, what about water pressure to have fire sprinkler systems? I assume that they're going to be required for that number of apartment complexes. The other thing that we discussed previously, and I think you were going to get some information about the accident report on Center Road, and I hope you were able to get that, but we did, from Highway 41 to Smiley Ingram Road, which is not all of Center Road, but is basically where this complex is going to be affected. And all totaled, in the 2.9 miles stretch of Center Road, I will go through every, well, I will go through this, accidents with injuries in 2018 was one, in 2019 was five. Accidents without injury in 2018 was 36. So far in 2019 is 18. Accidents with unknown injuries in 2018 was four. So far this year is six. Accidents confirmed entrapment, not included above, 2018 was 10. In 2019, so far, there's seven. We've still got a few months to go, and they seem to be happening more regularly recently than they have in the past. So all totaled, in 2018, there was 51 accidents. So far in 2019, there's 36, and this came from the Bartow County Sheriff's Department. We only have so many folks living on Center Road at this time. There's a lot of traffic goes through from one end to the other, making shortcuts and getting over to 20, getting around to I-75, which they have to do if they're going to get on 75. But if you add 300 more units, seems to me like that's adding at least 300 more cars, possibly 600 more cars, possibly even more than that. And you adding that many more vehicles on a one-and-a-half-lane highway, it seems that these accidents is going to go higher and higher, and there may even be fatalities and more serious injuries. And as the members talked about last, at the last meeting, it's very dangerous traveling on Center Road on those narrow, winding curves. I was going home the other day, and just before, before I got to the Autumn Canyon Turnoff, there was two tractor trailers came zipping down Center Road that I know they were not going 35 miles an hour. So, it's a dangerous situation. I'm not opposed to advancement. I'm not opposed to having fancy apartments, as they have referred to. I think that there's a place for them, and I think if we had the infrastructure, it would be a good thing to have there. But we need the infrastructure first. We need the water pressure first. We need the road widening first. We need to have the ability to, to meet the needs of the people, not meet the needs of a developer that's going to make his thousands of dollars and go on down the road, and then we, the community, has to live with the aftermath. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Again, this is a public hearing. Step forward, you've been very patient. You've been doing-
Just don't jump off.
You've been up, up-down, it's over there. Step on forward. This is a continuation of our hearing for Z-19-02. Mr. Mayor?
My name is Ann Byrne. I live at 15 Everest Drive, Carisville, in Ponder's Mountains subdivision. And really, much of what I was going to say can be echoed, is echoed by my, the previous speakers. But in addition to just bring to mind, in this small area, probably about a half mile at the most, we're asking to have 300 new apartments. We've just approved 189, I believe it is, in the townhouse apartments. There's an 89-house subdivision and another 72-house subdivision, of which all those people will be entering that two-lane road in the mornings to go to work and to go to school. That's a lot of cars in a very small area. They're mostly going to head down to town. Some will head in the other direction, but either way, you're looking at hundreds of cars trying to get out of those areas all at one time. Really, the city needs to look at finding other egress for these, these new groups, these new housing divisions. And in addition to the danger, I, I have a copy of those reports, the, the traffic incident report that was just discussed. I also have copies of comments sent out by other members of the subdivisions, and I'll submit those. I'm not going to sit here, stand here and read them to you. But I am going to ask that the council read these articles. And what this article is, is a discussion about really nice towns that have been overburdened by rapid development without the infrastructure being planned first, and the dangers of that. And I don't think that we want that to happen to Carisville. And this is a perf, this Center Road development is a perfect example of that problem, because the infrastructure is not there to handle this development. So I am going to ask the council to read these articles and also to put into the record this other information here.
If you'll share those with our clerk, well, she'll make sure that we, I'll get a copy of that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time?
My name is Mark Capola. I live at 40 Autumn Canyon Path Southeast, in the Autumn Canyon subdivision. And just a couple of things, the, the one question that I have is what impact this will have, and it's a concern in regards to public safety, in regards to how much more public safety will need to be hired, whether it be the fire department or the police department, and what impact that will have on the taxpayers in regards to having to increase the, the number of public safety employees. Also, I am an employee of a hospital in Canton, and we are at capacity right now, and I, and I know that Carisville Hospital is at capacity, and I think it's a disservice right now to those that would be moving in, because of the, the wait time, the burden that it would put on Carisville Medical Center, because it is such a small hospital. I mean, they're already at capacity, and, and how it would affect the, the health of those individuals. It's one thing to, to see this on a map, what Center Road looks like and what the subdivision is, looks like, but I invite the, the city council or the members of the city to actually, I know that it's possible that it's being tabled, but if it's not, then to go through there and look at how really absurd it is with this two-lane road, to have something this massive be built on this very, very small road. The other question that I had in my mind that came up is, this has been ongoing since 2004, this proposed expansion. And if truly that this, people want a, an apartment complex or another subdivision, how come it wasn't done in stages where, in cooperation with the city, the road was widened first? Let's see how that would affect things? Why suddenly it happened, has to happen all at one time? I, I don't understand why it just, I mean-
I think, and I don't mean to cut you, I don't think that what is being proposed was started in 2004. I think originally, this property was going to be a subdivision, and then 2008 happened, things changed.
Right.
So, I'm not discrediting your point, I'm just saying as a point of fact, I think the, the project that, that we're referring to didn't start in 2004, so-
No.
It just changes the premise just a little bit.
Absolutely. I totally agree. But even just thinking about having a subdivision, it, it's worthy of considering, let's expand Center Road. Let's try that first, and see how that, the impact that has. Let's do this in small steps. And that's all I have to share.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time?
I'm Terri Rodriguez, 11 Everest Drive, Carisville, Califor, I mean, Carisville, Georgia. I'm a retired teacher from California, and I've kind of seen this same thing happen in our small town that I taught in for 32 years. And it seems like, you know, we, we just don't think about the schools and the impact on the schools. And as a teacher, I know what it was like for me to have all these kids keep coming in because a subdivision was built here, or apartment complex was built there. And when I ended my teaching career, I was teaching with classes of 40. And I look at Carisville, and right now, it's, you know, it's workable, but I see what could happen to it very quickly with the amount of apartments and things that are coming into this city. And it's not just apartments, it's the housing complexes and all. And when we moved here to Carisville, we moved here because it was a quaint city, and I, I see it just growing so tremendously at a fast rate, and I, and I kind of hate that, because I like that small-town vibe that we had. So I hope that, you know, as a council, that you will really think about how it's going to impact not only the city itself, but, you know, what it does to the classrooms and what these teachers have to deal with on a daily basis. And when you're putting that many children of all different personalities in classrooms and stuff together, and you're overcrowding them, you know, we have so much, you know, bad things happening in our schools and, and all around us. And I think, you know, part of it is, sometimes we're, we're encroaching on each other's space, and we need to think about that. And I'm sure you've had children that have gone probably through Carisville's city schools. You might still have kids that go there, and the difference it makes if you are teaching a smaller class and it's workable, or you're having kids just keep filling the classroom to the point where you really are just controlling the classroom and not being able to teach. And so I just hope you will think about that. My other concern is, I know that the subdivision prior down from us, from Autumn Canyon and from Ponder's, was not annexed into the city. So if this is going to be city, or eventually going to annex that subdivision into the city, because it would be the only one, I think, that isn't, and it has a lot of children in it too, so that could be something that becomes more of a problem. But, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jenny McKean. I live at 29 Ranch Creek Pass in Carisville. That's the new subdivision, McCaskey Ridge, off of the spur at Center Road. And our big concern is that intersection at Center and the spur is already a dangerous one, the way it's cut. So, whatever goes forward, something's got to be done about that intersection to deal with that traffic, because it's already an issue without there being a traffic light or anything like that. That was my only comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time? Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, Z-19-02?
Mayor, before you close the public hearing, that third gentleman that spoke, I saw he had some papers in his hand. I did not know if he meant to give those to the clerk or not. So before, before you closed it, I just wanted to make sure if he wanted to, that he could do that.
I can give the accident report, the rest of my-
Whatever you want to give to her, we just want to make sure that we have all that for the record, sir.
That'd be fine.
Thank you. Very good, thank you. All right, if there's no one else coming forward, I will close the public hearing for Z-19-02. This is a first reading, but however, council, we'll remind you, we did have a letter submitted by the applicant this morning that obviously, that requested this to be tabled until December. I'm assuming for the intent of working with some of the issues that were brought up here and maybe modifying a plan that others might find agreeable in hopes of finding a win-win before they move forward. So I will send that to, to you all for, for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to table the resounding application, can, and conditioning the reapplication that it must occur before or on, or by December, the first meeting in December.
Be December 5th.
Second.
All right, a motion to second. All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. This item will be tabled. The applicant will be working with planning and development with any modifications that may be made to that. And again, it will take two readings. We'll have a first reading with no decision on December 5th, if everything goes the way that it's scheduled to, and then a final vote on, after a second public hearing on December the 19th. Okay? Thank you very much for everybody that spoke and made time to be here today at a morning meeting. And we're going to move on with the rest of our agenda, and we're going to remove the next item from the agenda. We're still a little more time on that, on that item. So Mr. Manino, if you'll move us forward with the, with the lien release, sir.
Thank you again, mayor and council. The property at 48 North Drive was purchased as part of the First Time Home Buyers Program. The homeowner has fulfilled their obligation requirements in the program, and they are looking to sell the property. With that, they have requested that the lien placed on the property be released. They have fulfilled their obligations, and with that, we recommend authorization to release said lien.
Very good. Any questions for Randy on this item?
Make a motion.
If not, a motion's in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
I appreciate the brevity. Small, Tamara, you've got the next three, please.
Yes, mayor and council. This is a small wireless facility ordinance. It's a requirement of Georgia state law. The ordinance will allow for a new article in Chapter 22 of the ordinances concerning wireless facilities and antennas. This is a second reading, and your approval is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, this is a right-of-way ordinance that's related to the small wireless facility ordinance as well. It would add for a new article in Chapter 7.5 of our development regulations, and it would address right-of-way. This is a second reading, and your approval is recommended.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Utility accommodations?
Yes, this is the utility accommodations article that would be added to the development regulations as well, and it's related to the small wireless facility ordinance. This is a second reading, and your approval is recommended.
Motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullenax, the floor is yours, sir.
This is the second reading on the capacity fee ordinance amendment. There's been no changes since the first reading, so we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from our first reading on this? And if there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We currently, the water department currently uses Switzer Engineering to, they developed our hydraulic model and do projects with that on a ongoing basis. So this is just an engineering services agreement so that we can go forward and utilize them just by drafting task orders rather than having to submit a, a whole new engineering services agreement. We currently have two task orders going with them. One is just for general consultation using the hydraulic model. The other one's on a model for the intake we have on the Erua River to possibly go to a permanent installation there someday. These are budgeted items, and we recommend approval of this service agreement.
Thank you. Motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Yes, you can.
There, there's not a cost to this. The cost is through the project.
Yeah, as the tasks come up.
Your motion's still good?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Ed.
This is just a general materials restock for distribution and collection. It's for the purchase of 300 of our 3/4-inch water meters, so the standard water meter for a residential installation. It's for a purchase from Delta Municipal. They're the exclusive provider for Neptune meters. That's the meter we use. It's 300 of the 3/4-inch meters. The amount of the purchase is $18,600, and we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Sanders, you have the next item, please, sir.
Thank you, mayor, council. Our Ford 6640 tractor that we use for mowing and bushhogging, there it is. It's a 1993, and it's a very good tractor. It needed some engine work. We didn't really know how much the repairs would, what would encompass. The original, it originally went in for a failing oil assembly, oil pan assembly. But while they were there, they did several other things. They replaced the pistons and rings and put a new clutch in and new throw-off bearings. But the total ended up being $12,157.76, and that, that tractor should be good for another 26 years of service.
We got our money's worth.
I'd hope so, right?
Yeah.
Very good.
They don't make them like that anymore.
No, they don't. Any questions for Tommy on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovell, you have the next two, please.
Mayor, the first one is a resolution and a representation agreement to allow this city to participate in a class action against Airbnb related to their failure to remit excise or hotel motel taxes or lodging taxes to the cities as required by state law and all ordinances. They are recommend, both are recommended for your approval. Y'all previously discussed this, to participate in this litigation. We will not be the only city in the state that's doing this. I will state that I just noticed the, my, I must have, since my paralegal's in Hawaii enjoying her life right now, I must have emailed-
You get to be here, though.
I know. I, I, I emailed you a draft copy of the resolution and not the final version. So you will be approving the revised resolutions that I will give you. The only change is, is the draft reference city commission instead of mayor and city council.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
At this time, actually, since the item that we have to add is kind of related to this item, I'm going to ask council to add that item to the agenda.
Mayor, Mr. Steph was asking if Mr. Wren's motion was to approve it as amended.
That's what I heard. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, my motion is to approve as amended.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to ask council to add an item to the agenda.
Make a motion to add that item.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
That item is added, since it kind of fits into this, this same topic.
Mayor, as y'all know, several years ago, we participated in a similar type of litigation that we just talked about with respect to Expedia, Travelocity, and Hotels.com and other internet providers where they were also not remitting hotel motel taxes and excise taxes to local governments. That was settled in our favor, and those funds have been being paid into a court and been administered by a firm called Brentson, Askew &amp; Berry out of Rome, who then distributed to all the cities in Georgia. That distribution agreement is expiring, but the funds will still be coming in. So we are asking council to reauthorize them to continue to manage the distribution of those funds for us.
Thank you. If there's no questions, chair will entertain a motion.
I don't know. The, the cost of that, is that offset by the funds that we receive?
Yes, those costs are all included as part of the overall settlement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you've got the next item as well.
Oh, lucky me. The next item is a proposed ordinance concerning community transportation vehicle ordinances, which most people would refer to as golf carts for simple things. It would allow them to be operated on city streets that have a speed limit less than 35 miles an hour. The maximum speed of those vehicles would be 25 miles an hour. You would have to be a licensed driver in Georgia to operate a golf cart. And those are the basic minimum requirements that are in the ordinance. It does apply to streets and right-of-ways. As drafted, it does also apply to recreational paths. Does have various limitations in there. Prior to this ordinance going into effect, if y'all did decide to adopt it after two readings, the city is required by state law to post signs at all the city limits that intersect state routes entering the city. Once those signs are up, the ordinance would then become effective. Even if you passed it, until the signs go up, the ordinance is still not technically effective. So that will have to be adjusted with that. The ordinance does have a blank in it. It has contemplated that there could be streets that public safety or council may decide that they do not want to allow these vehicles to operate on that currently have a speed limit of less than 35 miles an hour. If there are any, y'all will need to add those before the second reading. If not, then we will delete those, that language from the proposed draft.
I think it'd be irresponsible to ask both Public Works and Public Safety to identify, though, if there are any, and if there are none, then that's equally as fine. So perhaps in the interim, we can get some direction from them on how they would think that would be best to proceed. Okay, is there any other discussion about this ordinance?
We had talked about not allowing motorized vehicles on recreational paths. Assuming we would talk about that in the second reading.
Well, or you can talk about it now and direct us to make that change between these two readings when it comes before you.
In the work session, we talked about eliminate, not allowing motorized vehicles on recreational paths. There are three areas, this, this item, D, H, and I, and only allowing, we talked about the motorized wheelchair, for example.
Right.
So I would like to add that language, eliminate that one.
If I don't hear any objections from anybody else on council, we will include that in the second, in the draft of the second reading for y'all to act on.
And those paths are the, the trails in the-
That would be the current trail system of the city of Cartersville.
And/or sidewalk?
Sidewalks are prohibited already under the proposed ordinance.
That's the state law, isn't it?
Yes.
And they're not made up?
And we still are figuring out who would handle the registration fee of-
That would be for staff to decide where they want that to happen. I don't think that decision has been made yet.
I think once we pass it, we can, staff can then work on the operational side.
And it's, I mean, it's $15 annual registration.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, this is first reading. We will not vote on that today, but we'll take it up at our next meeting, and hopefully some of those amendments and clarifications and directions will be put inside there. Mr. Hampton, you've got the next item, please.
Good morning, mayor and council. Electric Department is seeking your approval of the renewal of our maintenance contract with Itron. This is our MV90 software that we use to program our larger customer meters and to download the annual data necessary to prepare the monthly billing. The software analyzes customer demands or consumption and provides the totalization necessary for customers with multiple meters. This is a sole-source item. It's a budgeted expense to the amount of $11,663.94, and we request your approval.
Thank you. Questions for Derek on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gillum, you've got the next two, please.
Good morning, mayor and council. Come to with the first one here, a contract for containment systems. This is based on an RFP that was done for the netting and poles on Fields 3 and 4 at the Sports Complex. We received eight proposals on August the 14th. We chose containment systems, which are out of Birmingham, Alabama. The total cost of this project will be $63,000. This is a budgeted item, and this is the last of the geo-bond money.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Facility rental updates, please.
Yes, sir. This, the partial recreation department's requesting an update to the existing rental fee schedule that was back on January the 1st of 2014. This basically cleans up a lot of the rental fees that were on there before. There's some small increases as well. So we're recommending to mayor and council for approval to update this rental fee schedule.
I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Does this include the Echo Clubhouse?
The Echo, the, oh, you're talking about the Goodyear Clubhouse?
Goodyear Clubhouse, yeah.
That, that rate stays the same.
Any other questions? Another motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Michael, when you come up, I know you've got two of the next three. Why don't you go ahead and handle both of your items, and Keith will finish this out with that final item.
Yes, sir. Good morning, mayor and council. I have, my first item is for a tax bill to Floyd County. It's for our facilities that we have, our two stations up there. It's $5,774.09. It is a budgeted item, and we just have to pay our taxes, right?
That's right. We have an option, we could not, and see what happens.
Okay.
We don't recommend that. All in favor, Kate, well, I need a motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I just wanted to make a motion, and a second. All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like the commissioner there for a minute.
My second one is for Stevenson Engineering Company. We have need to do silt and erosion control for our Transco Station, the six-inch line that will lay along 113 coming into town from our station to Brown Farm Road. The proposal was $9,800. They've done work for us satisfactory before, and everything's always worked for us. This is a budgeted item also.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lovell, you have this final item with Comcast.
Yes, mayor. The city gas department was installing some facilities, and Comcast did improperly locate their facilities. But we actually struck some of their existing facilities as well in that area. Because of that, they have asked us to pay for the damage associated with that, which is, which was about $8,000. But due to their improper locating, we're going to be paying them around $6,300 for that. However, I would request that council approve authorizing that payment subject to receiving a release from an authorized representative of Comcast. The reason for that is Comcast uses a third-party consultant to collect their claims for struck utilities and damages. And a third-party consultant can't release the city or prohibit Comcast from potentially making a claim later.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve, to obtain a release from-
Motion to approve, subject to obtaining a release from authorized representative of Comcast.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, before we... No, no, you've got it, you're dismissed. Before we do adjourn, I want to make sure everybody gets matched up with the right person. Before I do that, is there any other business that needs to come forward, council? Good, we'll handle this business very quickly here. If you are a member of city council or mayor, that is Garrison Hardy, Emmett Terry, Carden Gray, is it? You know who you are, Carden. I can't read the handwriting, sorry. Peyton Holden, Lily Burrows, Anna Grace Boone, and Madison Bernie, you're here, if you're some of these other folks, you're already gone. City manager Jenny Crumb, this is Tamara Brock, who's been looking up for the last hour or so. Finance director, you're going to stay with us as well. Perhaps, yeah, you stay with us. Will Simmons, you're with the fire chief, there he is right there. Gas superintendent, Jancy Cooper, Jancy, you're right there with Michael Hill, raise your hand, Michael. There you go. Harry Mackey, you're with our electric director, it's Derek Hampton right here, and Cole Nelson, you're with our water director, which is Ed Mullenax right there in the back. Public Works is Nicole Si, there you are, Tommy's right over there. City attorney Chloe Satterfield, I think you get to stay with us.
Yes.
Is that, city clerk, Sunny Kate, where are you? There you are, right there. There's our clerk. Cameron Rhodes, you're with the police chief. John Blackhall, there you are, John. Tom Gillum, right over there on the other side of the room. Harrison Caswell, Randy Manino right here in the front, and Gray Olson, that is, you are with Dan Porta, there's Dan right there. So after we adjourn, actually, let's just do it, motion to adjourn, and we'll finish our other business after that.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Get a gun, stick it.